Officers.
Good morning. Sorry I'm late. I meant to come up here and then I got busy. Sorry. This is the time of the year that the auditor conveys the meeting and sets the process for the election of the new chairman. According to Robert's Rules of Orders, any nominations do not need a second, so I will open the floor for nominations for chair.
Madam, I would nominate Lindell Peterson this chair.
Are there any other nominations?
I would nominate Ron Buscaroo.
Are there any?
My mind was fired up.
I'll nominate Nancy Troutman.
There's not that many votes.
Ron, you want to try it?
No.
Try nominating somebody?
Are you interested?
No. No, I am not. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Is that two or three? Any other nominations? If not, we'll close nominations. How would the board like to vote?
You're running the meeting. That's your?
Roll call vote? We'll do by roll call?
Buscaroo?
Lindell.
Davis?
Nancy.
Holloway?
Lindell.
Lindell?
Buscaroo.
Troutman?
Lindell.
Congratulations, sir. You must do a good job.
Thank you.
Or not, with that many nominations.
Well, I...
Please do vice chair.
Lindell can do that. Nominations are now open for vice chair, and the same rules that Julie laid down apply.
Mr. Chair, I would nominate Nancy Troutman as vice chair.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would make a motion that we seize nominations and cast a unanimous ballot.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second to cast a unanimous ballot for Commissioner Troutman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Next item of business is to adopt the Rules of Order with exceptions, and we have before us a sheet describing the rules. And Holly, would you care to state those, please?
Good morning, Commissioners. Holly Hinnies, your office manager. What you have in front of you is the two motions to adopt Rules of Order. I'll read the first one for you. Motion to adopt Ro... geez, I'm tongue-tied this morning. Robert's Rules of Order, 10th Edition, but not to adopt the portion that precludes discussion of issues by the chair or precludes the chair from voting except where there is a tie. Second exception is a motion to adopt Pennington County Commissioner's policy regarding reconsideration of action taken by the board, and that is listed before you. So I would request a motion to approve and adopt Rules of Order with those two exceptions.
That would be my motion, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to adopt the Rules of Order with two exceptions. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is to adopt the Commissioner's salary for 2013, and we have...
Currently, the Commissioner's salaries are set at $1,100 a month. What we are looking for today is to set the 2013 salaries for the Board of Commissioners at.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Holly, what did we put in the budget for 2013?
An increase has been figured into the 2013 budget to allow for an increase up to $1,200.
I'd make a motion to set the 2013 salary at $1,200 per month.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to set the Commissioner's salary for 2013 at $1,200 a month. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is to review and approve the agenda. Does anyone wish to add something, anything, to the agenda? Mr. Davis?
I was just going to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is the consent agenda. Holly?
All right. The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the Board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a Board member or a citizen. Today, I have placed the following items for your consideration. Approval of the minutes from our special meeting of December 17, 2012. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting, December 18, 2012. Approval of the vouchers in the amount of $3,139,579. Approval of the resolution for the Drug-Free Workplace Act certification for a public entity for 2013. Approval of the 2013 poll worker salaries as submitted by the Auditor's Office. To schedule a public hearing on January 15, 2013 for general fund supplement SP 13-001 for the John T. Vikurvich budget submitted from Health and Human Services. Approval of the Chairman's signature on the advertising agreement with Lee Enterprises doing business as the Rapid City Journal for personnel advertising submitted from the HR Office. A request to surplus two Yamaha four-wheelers as presented from the Sheriff's Office. And finally, acknowledgement of disinterment permit number 846-796.
Does anyone wish any of the items on the consent agenda removed?
I would like item 15.
Item 15 has been removed from the consent counter. Is there any other requests? Hearing none, the Chair would accept the motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve item 8 through 14 and item 16 on the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve items 8 through 14 and item 16 on the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item 15.
I just have a question. It seems kind of odd to me that we're trading... we're declaring surplus two four-wheelers assigned to the Sheriff's Office. We're selling to the Rapid City Fire Department. If... you know, if they're good enough for the Fire Department, aren't they good enough for us?
Good morning. Brian Mueller from the Sheriff's Office. Those four-wheelers are 2004 model four-wheelers, and they still are in pretty good working condition, but they do have some mechanical issues. And the Fire Department uses those on fires to pull hose around on the back lines. And we need something that if we're going to take something out on a search and rescue mission, we need something that definitely is going to get us there and get us back. So we felt it was time to upgrade those four-wheelers for our office. And also, with selling them to the Fire Department, we still do have access to those if we need them for an emergency.
Okay. Thanks, Brian.
Thanks.
Brian. Any further questions or discussion?
Well, the only thing that I've got to say about it is that I've got a 2004 Yamaha Rhino myself, and I mean, I've drove the wheels off that thing, and it still runs just like a new one. The only thing I've ever done to it is adjust the valves and change the oil. So, I don't know.
With no wheels, how do you get anywhere?
It's... they're getting kind of oblong.
Sorry about that.
I could say something to the answer to that, but there's ladies in the crowd.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion?
Now make a motion to approve 15.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve item 15. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item, item 17, set the commission meeting dates for 2013. And we have a printout here. Holly, do you wish to comment on this?
Yes, I have the printout of you in front of you, remaining on the first and third Tuesdays of each month with 9:00 a.m. We had a request from the Auditor's Office to move our regular meeting, the first one, in June. I've moved it to Thursday, June 6, due to the city school election. I've also added two dates in June for 2014 budget hearings. We... I moved our second meeting in September to a Friday due to our fall convention, and added one on Monday, December 16 for our department head evaluations.
Anyone have any comments relative to the schedule?
I just have one comment about the department head evaluations. It would seem to me that we... I would rather do it in November instead of waiting until that last month in case there would be anything that would come up that we need to deal with. It would give us a little bit of wiggle room, so I would rather see our department head evaluation date put into November. Just as personal thought.
Holly, what are the logistics relative to the meeting room?
We're far enough out that I can schedule with the court systems with no issue. So if you guys pick a date, we'll have it.
So if we choose to move it to November, is that an open question for you to program it, or can we do it today?
As long as you give me their approval, and we'll be good to go. I'll get it scheduled.
Okay.
So we move that to the 18th of November, is that what your thought was?
That's what I'm thinking, just because I think if you... anything came up we needed to deal with in any evaluation, we should have a little time to do it.
Karen, can you look at the calendar? I just need to make sure that we're not buddying up against planning and zoning on Monday morning.
I might have a moment. I might be able to.
What, there on the second Monday?
It's the second and the fourth Monday.
Well, if it would be November 4, or it would be the 11th would be the...
For planning. So we'd be fine on November 18?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd make a motion to approve the Commissioner's meeting agenda as presented, excluding item added for department head evaluations, and move that to either November meeting. Holly's choice.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are we clear on that, Holly?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Julie, I have a question on the... that June city school election.
Mm-hmm.
What is it you'd use this room for? Is that what you're saying? You're going to use this room?
Yeah, we use it to open absentee ballots.
Can you use the one down?
We use both rooms.
The EOC room as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
When we get into the new building, I won't have to move you. But there just isn't another big room to do it in. Yeah.
We appreciate your indulgence in that.
Any further discussion? We do have a motion and a second. Hearing no further discussion, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item is number 18, designation of three legal newspapers for 2013.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd make a motion to approve the current three advertised newspapers as the advertisers for Pennington County Commission.
Is there a second?
I'll second it. Any further discussion?
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Comments from the Commission or the audience? Anyone wish to address the Commission?
You do have all of your circulation statistics from the Journal, the Current, and the Hill City Prevailor. We also had a submission from the Native Sun News yesterday, so you should also have those statistics in front of you and while. And representatives are here from each of the papers, if the Board has any questions or concerns they want to address.
Does anyone wish to address the Commission? Mr. Chair? Yes. The gentleman out here. Come forward. Identify yourself, please.
Good morning, Board. I'm Kirk Dickerson.
Come up to the...
Oh, good morning and happy New Year, Board. I'm Kirk Dickerson, and this is Eric Yeloboy. We're with the Native Sun News here in Rapid City. It's nice to meet you. Thank you for the opportunity to propose a chance to get the minutes from the Pennington County into our paper. Our circulation, our paper, has grown quite a bit since the last time we visited you here last year. In front of you, there are some statistics about our circulation for Pennington County. We're also located in every newsstand right along next to the competition here in Rapid City as well. Now, our readership, it changes hands five times per household, so the number there that you're looking at at 1,560 is actually multiplied by five, which comes out to be 7,800. We serve a native population here in Rapid City of 10,000. Also, those include a lot of homeowners and property taxpayers as well. Now, the reason that we wanted to come and do the forecast here for you guys is to save you a lot of money on your budgets. We are extremely budget-friendly. For example, if I may be allowed to come up before the Board with the media packets there, so you can take a look at the paper in the classified section. That be okay? If you would be kind enough to remove the paper and look in the sports section there for the classifieds to get a little visual on what your minutes would be there.
Thank you. Oh, hey, that's pretty cool.
Yeah, they're beautiful.
Now, the reason why we're going to be saving you thousands and thousands of dollars each year is that a full page in our classified section for legal ads is only $156, which is a very good bargain. Also, to reduplicate that on CD, there is no charge for that as well. So the information that you give us will be printed into our paper directly. We are also on classifieds or online at www.nsweekly.com, so your minutes are duplicated absolutely free online for all of our online subscribers as well. We have very good coverage there, and we would be greatly appreciated in being a part of the Rapid City Minutes. We do... our papers sell 85% off the newsstands. People actually come and search out our paper each week. I know, I say, "All these... hey, get that paper." So we're read cover to cover, and those minutes will be read. We deal with a large variety of contractors and large businesses in our paper that read as well, and they would be some very good future clients for Pennington County, knowing what they charge and seeing the work that they do in our classifieds section.
One of the biggest things about our newspaper that we have grown so rapidly within the last four years in the Rapid City area, being Native American, it's one of the papers that, you know, is mostly read by our Native American readership. But we also have a well-diverse readership that, you know, we have so many people that love our paper, they actually were just within the past, since I've been with the office since June, I've seen our readership have a well-diverse of people calling our office wanting subscriptions, where do we get the paper? And we are throughout Rapid City in the Family Thrift Centers, Prairie Markets, McDonald's. So, you know, we are very accessible. And one of the things about a readership, I mean, he has... he's already covered it, but when somebody buys our paper, we take it home. I got my family, my brothers, my sisters, my siblings. They look at that, "Oh, we got the paper," and we always read it. So we know our readership is out there. We know we're growing, and we're only growing even faster, and our population is getting covered, not only just by home businesses, but also, I mean, home owners, but also business owners love our paper being in their offices, too. So we understand that we are growing rapidly in the Rapid City area. And I think for the advertising price that, you know, we can do for you, we can save you that amount of money for later down the road, so...
And last but not least, one of the great advantages of our paper is that we're a weekly paper. Say if you were to publish some important minutes, somebody might miss it if it just goes into a daily publication. With our publication, it's there, and they know it's going to be there all week, and they have information and access to that information all week long, which is a tremendous advantage for us. And at this time, I would like to know, is there anyone on the Commission Board that has a question they would like to ask at this time?
Any questions? Comments? You... this paper is January 2 to the 8, so you come out once a week.
Yes, every Wednesday.
Every Wednesday.
Yes, sir. We also have state departments in there, game fishing parks, state departments in there doing their advertisements as well for hunting seasons and things like that, and these are contracts for bids.
So if I understand this form correctly?
Correct.
What you're seeing is that your... the people who receive your paper in Pennington County?
Correct.
Is 1,560.
1,564, correct.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dickerson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? We do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay. Item 19, 2013 Commission Committee Assignments. And I think Commissioner Holloway raised the question about planning and zoning, did you not?
I did. If I may, Mr. Chair, as it relates to planning and zoning, I had brought it up, I think, at the last meeting. My concern is that the way we currently do it, it seems like we're kind of the lame duck in the group, because we come every... once every fifth month, and you attend two meetings, and then you don't come back for another four months. And so the consistency on the Commission being... a Commissioner being up to speed on what's happening in the... on the Planning Commission seems to me like it's lacking. And I mentioned to a couple of the Commission members, you know, if we had a Board member on the Planning Commission that we appointed that was only coming once every four months, or once every five months to a meeting, we'd probably say they weren't very effective. So I don't know how we're any different than they are. I know it's been threatened to me that, "Well, if you think it's so great, then you can be honored all the time." I'm not advocating that necessarily. I'm just saying I'm not sure that the system we got in place is very productive.
Would you care to divulge who threatened you?
I don't think there was a threat made. I thought we were going to put him on that, and Ron Buscaroo, Don is the mail clerk.
Okay.
Well, I guess when I first started thinking about this, I wasn't aware of the statute that requires a Commissioner to actually to be on that Board. And so my thought was that we'd appoint another citizen to it who could probably do a much better job than the Commissioners, but understand that a Commissioner has to be on the Board, so I don't know.
And I think on our committee list, the items with an asterisk are those that require... are required by law. And just for the information of the public, that's the Extension Board, the Planning and Zoning Commission, Public Defender's Advisory Board, and the Whedon Pest Board. The other committee assignments are optional.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
The Local Emergency Planning Committee, that really doesn't exist anymore. You know, we've kind of gone to that Emergency Management Board, so we could maybe just strike that out of there.
See?
It does?
You just haven't been going.
It's different.
Oh, I see. That's where they have that little bit of money. They're always trying to figure out what to spend.
The statute thoroughly created, and it has oversight over it, has that.
So does it... is it a required committee?
That committee is required to be...
Okay.
Mr. Chair, on the Building Committee and Master Planning, Commissioner Troutman attends with me on that on a regular basis, and so I'd like to see her be an alternate to that, if that would be all right. And then also, the Healthcare Trust Board, just because of my schedule, I've again relied on Commissioner Troutman to cover me on that. So if we could make that official on this appointment sheet, that'd be great.
Do you concur, Commissioner Troutman?
Yes, I've been going to his meetings.
Any other changes that Commissioners wish to make?
Mr. Chairman, I guess I would agree with Commissioner Holloway that perhaps we need somebody more permanent on the Planning Commission.
So that would be two votes, at least.
Yeah, we just need to figure out if we could get a third one, and then we could nominate somebody, see?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I wasn't going to say anything much about this, but I can't remember the time, and Dan, I don't know if you had a chance to look back after I mentioned it to you or not, but years ago, we used to have a fixed person from the County Commission on that Planning Commission. And it got to the point that it was really kind of a hassle after fashion. And as I remember, there was a lot of discussion about other Commissioners at the time, and they decided to go with the monthly Commissioner on the Planning Commission. And I think one of the reasons was not only the hassle of continually going to those meetings on that one, on that particular day, that generally speaking, you're dealing with different subjects every meeting. So it's not a lot of continuity as far as the subjects on the Planning Commission go. So I think that's one of the reasons why they decided to go with the monthly Commissioner.
Is there any other configuration that might kind of blend the two in terms of quarterly or that sort of thing?
Well, Mr. Chair, my concern has been that it's a lot of work. I mean, you're reading a packet of information a week as a Commissioner, and, you know, that's okay, but it's a lot of work to do planning and zoning during those months, if you do it as you should. And I think particularly, all five of us are very concerned that we want to do it, right? So when you have a Commission... So, when you have a commissioner assigned to planning and zoning, and also being on the Board of Commissioners, and then to many committee assignments, um, that commissioner is gonna be pretty busy. And I just, um, I just, that was my concern, is how you would handle it so that it was a fair workload. I also have thought of, maybe you do something like a six-month type, kind of commitment rather than a year, and, but then again, you still sort of have that committee assignment sort of thing, 'cause we do that on an annual basis. So, you know, I, what you can always do is try something, you know? Maybe you try it for six months and see how that works, and, um, I, I'll address that later. I, it seems like a year is a long time to try it.
Are these committee assignments amendable? As we go along somewhere during the year, we could move to restructure this. So, um, so we do have some options.
Yeah.
At this point, uh, are there any other commissioners that, uh, looking at this list, wish to make changes?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I guess I'd just like to ask Commissioner Holloway, is, Don, is there anything on this agenda that's getting in your way as far as your commitment for the state?
No, I don't think so.
Do we have a motion?
I'd make a motion to, uh, approve the committee assignments as laid out with the additions that we've discussed.
Is there a second?
What does that do, is that leave planning and zoning the way it is then?
But if anybody comes up with any great ideas, we could always amend that sometime during the year.
I'll second that.
So if we could find a volunteer that would agree to do it.
I think Ken volunteered.
Did he?
I think I heard, a while back.
Could make that motion.
What were you listening to? I tell you what I wouldn't mind doing, it was a two-and-a-half-month deal, so you'd have four, five meetings, and then, then I'll turn it, something that... Kind of break it up a little bit, but I tell you, I, I can remember back then, you know, I got on the Planning Commission in nineteen ninety, and went nineteen ninety-eight, and then on the commission, but, boy, after a while, it got old.
Well, you're getting a hundred dollars a month more, you know? You gotta remember that.
We do.
So, could, could we, could we appoint Jay as our special, um, commissioner, just for those...
This meeting is getting out of hand, so I'm going to call for a vote on the motion and, and the second.
Oh, come on.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Next item is the lease agreement for the rooms at the Pier Ramcoata Hotel for the twenty thirteen legislative session. And, uh...
Can I make a motion to enter into that agreement and have the chairman sign it? It is, I think, the same as usual, was it, for money-wise? And it's always, uh, it puts a little onus on Holly, because she's got a call, but, uh, we don't have to pay for it if we don't use it. And it's always nice to make sure we have one when we got there, 'cause sometimes it can be difficult to find a room in Pier.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the, the lease agreement for the Ramcoata Hotel in Pier. Any further discussion?
Oh, the only thing that I would add, Mr. Chairman, is that, uh, other people have used it too, uh, I think the judges have used it, and various department heads in the county use it when they go to Pier, so, and then we're reimbursed for that. So it, it works out pretty good for everybody, I think.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Items from the Treasury.
Good morning.
Morning.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you.
Uh, we have three things on the agenda, um, the designation of the banks, that we do every year at the first meeting in January pursuant to SDCL seven twenty thirteen. I request that the Board of Commissioners to designate Wells Fargo Bank and First Interstate Bank as the primary active depositors for Pennington County, but that the Board is advised that we may utilize other financial institutions for short-term and investments throughout the year.
So you need a motion then, Janet?
Yes.
I'd move to, um, designate Wells Fargo Bank of South Dakota and First Interstate Bank as the primary active depositories for Pennington County.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Does the, um, utilizing any other institution require action by the commission?
Not as long as it's part of the motion, that Wells Fargo and First Interstate are the primary depositories, and then the other banks, out of the choosing, can be used.
So I would add that to my motion.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried.
The next item is the public liability quarterly reports, and those are checked quarterly online by the, on South Dakota Legislative Audit website, that the banks that we are currently doing business with have the proper amount of pledged collateral. Um, some of the banks do send in their collateral reports to us, and we have that on file in our office. Anytime that a bank would not be collateralized and would come out on that list, we would remove our money from that bank. But that also is a motion that has to be made to, um, by the commission, the first meeting in January, that, um, the public liability, liability quarterly reports are on file and can, can be looked at at the Legislative Audit website.
So, how does that...
Just...
Move to place that report on file?
In the Treasury's office.
By the public, through the...
Through the Treasury's office.
Treasury's office, okay.
Do, do, give him a second.
Did you make that motion?
No, go ahead.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second. Then I have a question.
Yes.
Do you have a copy of that on file in your office as well?
It, it is in my office. The reports are in my office, correct.
But then you, if you wanted to look at them online, you go to the State Legislative Audit.
Yes. And you could see the name of all the banks that are not collateralized.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Next item?
The next item is the delinquent mobile homes pursuant to SDCL ten twenty-two thirty-one on the first Tuesday. In January, the Treasury must present to the Board of Commissioners a list of all delinquent mobile home taxes as of December thirty-first for the preceding year. I am presenting that list to you today. There are, it, if you go to the back, it tells you the number of warrants, the number of taxes due on the registered mobile homes, and the mobile homes that are building on leased site that are pulled off real estate. So we will be turning over to the Sheriff's, Pennington County Sheriff's Office for collection. The registered mobile homes warrants, two-hundred-and-forty-nine, the building on leased site warrants, three-hundred-and-forty-four, and the total taxes of the twenty-four thousand and the ninety-seven thousand, along with the forty-four ninety-seven. And those will be given to the Sheriff's Office to collect. And last year, the Sheriff's Office collected them all, and we didn't have any return to us as uncollectible.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, I have a question. When the sheriff has to go out and collect these, does he get paid for the amount of time put into collecting these, along with the taxes, or?
The sheriff gets twenty-five dollars for each distress warrant that's issued.
And does that go...
Plus, Brian?
Mileage.
Mileage.
And does that go into the general fund, or?
I would defer to Brian. I don't get into the sheriff's.
It does?
As a revenue for you, correctly.
I suspect the twenty-five dollars is not a money-making scheme for the county.
No. We, we used to get a dollar.
Dollar.
And we finally got the legislator, legislature to, to increase that to twenty-five dollars.
Six hundred and twenty-five bucks, people have money.
That was mine, mine and Don's bill, from a dollar to twenty-five, so we got twenty-four-dollar increase.
I have a question, uh...
Hey.
Is, is this, uh, the numbers that we're looking at, an increase or a decrease in previous years, as far as approximate number?
They're pretty close. Uh, maybe five to six thousand dollars off, more this year than previously.
The, um, is, is there something about the timing of these taxes being due that, that exacerbates this situation, or is it just a normal, normal deal?
Quite honestly, most of the people on this list, I'd say fifty percent, are the same people that are on this list every year.
Okay. Can't legislate that, can we? Okay, and what kind of a motion do you need?
Just need a motion to accept the delinquent mobile home list at, as presented.
That's my motion.
There a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, to accept the delinquent mobile home list as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Items from the chair. With the permission of the commission, I will make a speech. I, um, acknowledge your trust in me to continue as your chair, and in contemplating, uh, some of our experiences in the last year, I would propose that items from the public, or any other comments, that are brought forward should be in the interest of Pennington County and the function of its government. This meeting is called to conduct the business of Pennington County. And so, uh, with that in mind, as the chairman, anytime the discussion moves away from that, I will call whoever's making that presentation, whether it's the public or commissioner, to, um, cease making comments. And I will also, would, with your permission, at any time remarks from the public or the commission become personal, that I will also wrap the gavel, or my knuckles, or whatever. And if, um, anyone objects to that performance on the part of the chair, please say so.
I support it.
Likewise. Me too. Yep. And along with the, and along with the South Dakota Codeified Law that says that you can fine a disruptive person to the contempt of the county commissioners, five-dollar fine, and twenty-four hours in jail. And I think that needs to be part of our process.
And, uh, who enforces that?
The, the board, and, and those two right there.
Okay, well, if, if, uh, there's no objections, that will be the ground rules that I'll attempt to apply.
Very good, Chair.
Thank you.
Items from the public, or committee reports, excuse me.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Uh, this isn't really a committee report, but I guess it's, it's a, it's a, uh, information that was passed on to me, uh, from the Minnehaw County Commission, a representative from their office, Robert Wilson, called, and, and apparently there's some legislation being looked at. It came out of the State County Commission Association meetings pertaining to exempt, um, properties, tax, tax-exempt properties. And they want to form a committee, Dick Kelly, who is on the Minnehaw County Commission, apparently is gonna try to head this committee up, um, but they want to have a committee to look at it, to look at all the tax-exempt properties, and maybe come up with some proposed legislation. And since it does have to do with legislation, and the fact that they said that there would be a meeting in Pier in January, late January, where they would kind of get themselves organized, and then it sounded like after that, they would hold their meetings, uh, teleconference. I would, and they wanted, they wanted to know if, if a member of the Pennington County Commission would be interested in serving on that, on that, uh, that board. I think, I think it would be good. I did mention it to Commissioner Busch, and since he's on the, our legislative, uh, committee, um, I'd like to see him be appointed to that, uh, that board if he'll accept it.
I can add just a little bit, 'cause there was some discussion at the convention and some other places, that they're looking at, and, and boy, some of this gets pretty tricky, 'cause there are a lot of it dealing with religious exemptions on houses, and they got somebody that doesn't have a church in, in Minnehaw County, but lives in a four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house, that's now exempt, and they're starting to really question if we can limit that somehow. So that's kind of what they're going to be looking at. And, and a lot of that stuff is tricky stuff, and not popular, but, uh, you know, uh, realistically, it doesn't, some of that doesn't make sense. That's, that's kind of, I think, where they're going.
Don, was that a motion you made a minute ago?
Well, I, I wonder if we can, uh, make such a motion, since it's not on the agenda.
Probably not.
So...
But it could just be an assignment too. I mean, if, if, if we just have a consensus that, that Ron would represent us, and it would just be a matter of having Holly call this gentleman back, and...
Since we already adopted the committee assignments, and he's still, he retained his seat as Legislative Liaison, I think anything that falls into his net is fair game.
Okay.
There may be, uh, there may be some issues that it would be prudent to bring to the Board as to what our position might be.
There will be.
And, uh... Well, I, I would think that there, there wouldn't be any legislation this year, uh, I mean, it's too late for that, but, so we'll have time to discuss it, and, and since Ron's on that committee, he could present it to us as a committee report in the future.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other committee reports?
Well, Mr. Chair, I hate to, uh, point a finger, bad mouth, or whatever you might want to say to our sister city to the east, but it's about time they get on board with some of this stuff. And when they found out that they couldn't, uh, opt out of the tax freeze more than six times, um, now they're looking for ways to get revenue. So, like, I guess if that's what it took to get them off dead center, um, it's nice to see them coming on board.
Any other? I, I would report that, um, the RCND Committee explored the issue of them providing administrative services to West Dakota Water Development District. I don't think any of us went to the West Dakota meeting Monday, but I understood that the purpose of the meeting was to solve their situation in terms of administrative services. And so, um, as, as we get information, we'll find out whether or not they've acquired those services. And, um, as, as you know, the, um, membership on the West Dakota has changed... And as, as you know, the membership on the West Dakota has changed. And there are three openings on that Board that those vacancies have been advertised. And the process of someone petitioning or submitting petitions is, I believe, has this month to be completed. So that would be my report. Any others?
Mr. Chair, I have one item on the Ellsworth Task Force. We had a meeting right after our last Commission meeting. And it has to do with things that are happening or may happen at Ellsworth. But anyway, it came up at the, at the meeting that we want to continue to press forward of the Ellsworth Task Force and also get the people back on board that we've had for lobbyists over the last BRAC Commission and over the last few years before that. And I know that the Ellsworth Task Force members will be coming to the Commission meeting, probably next meeting, I think, with Holly, and asking for that continued, money coming out of our contingency fund to up that and allow us to proceed with our hiring those guys back. Thank you.
Any other reports? If not, the next item is items from the public. Anyone from the public that wishes to address the Commission?
So, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Given your statement during items from the Chair, and I look at the statement under items from the public, I'm wondering if we shouldn't change that somewhat if it's legal to do so. Rather than saying on any issue not on the agenda, we should say something to the effect, on any issue regarding Pennington County business or some phraseology. It would seem like that would be appropriate, given our consensus of how we want to proceed with our meetings this year.
And Holly was nodding in the affirmative.
I have another statement that I've been working on tweaking that basically says that and how they're decorum and how they approach and be recognized, so I'll work on that.
Great.
Thank you. Any thing further?
Mr. Chair, yes, that item from the public, and Holly said that she'd be working on that. Should we also acknowledge the fact that as soon as she gets that put together, that that will be the item under items from the public? So we don't have any question about where we're going with that. Really, I don't think we should have had this meeting today without our General Counsel in the back room.
Well, we're this far along. We just will continue.
Back there.
Now, we have a choice. We can either move to executive session, take a recess, whatever you want to do. But we can't do planning and zoning until 10:30.
And I take your executive session option away because we don't have any at this point in time.
And since the, the item from planning and zoning is just a continuance, I think we can do it.
Except...
Anybody have an objection to that?
We are, we do have a Board of Adjustment thing, but...
Still under continuance, so both of those items are continued.
Continued?
Well, I don't know about the second one.
With Young, Bill Young, yeah.
Sorry.
Okay, General Counsel.
I don't know if there would be somebody that would show up at, you know, 10:29 and want to disagree with the continuance of the item or something. So that's my only word of caution to you. I'd love to be able to see you take care of that matter right now, but...
We did have a, an official response from attorneys last time that was not aired.
So I think there'd be somebody here, really.
You know, we got a brown envelope with a...
Right.
So does that suggest we should wait till 10:30?
Well, yeah, I mean, they're, they're opposed to the granting of the variance. And I know it was continued today at 10:30. And so I guess that's my concern, is maybe they or someone on their behalf would show up and want action to be taken and not grant the continuance and...
And the problem is that the second one is the second reading of a reason. So I suppose that's got to be a hearing too, doesn't it?
And a question was asked to me too on the, you know, could the County Commission on its own do the continuance? Or do you have to go into Board of Adjustment to do a continuance? From my perspective, it's a scheduling matter. You're not taking any action on the merits of the item. So I would think the Board of Commissioners could, when you get to that item, you could continue it. On the other hand, it takes, what, 10 seconds to go into Board of Adjustment and just do it? So I guess...
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion, we continue this meeting until 10:30.
Wait a minute, continue it till 10:30?
Take a break and continue at 10:30.
And we do welcome the new State's Attorney.
Not yet. Monday morning at 8:00.
Meeting back to order. And need a motion to go into Board of Adjustment.
I move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. You're on.
Good morning, Dan Jensen. Happy New Year. Item A is a variance request, 12-11, for William Young to reduce the minimum required front yard setback and side yard setbacks from 25 feet to zero feet and to reduce the minimum required lot size in a general ag district and a limited ag district from 40 acres and 10 acres to .35 acres. This was continued from the last County Board meeting, the Board of Adjustment meeting. The applicant has requested to continue this to the January, what is the next meeting, 15?
That's my motion. Motion and a second to continue the variance to the next January meeting? Any discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Order one.
So I move to command a Board of Adjustments?
I get moved and seconded to adjourn the Board of Adjustments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Consent agenda.
The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and a vote of the Board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of the Board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following item. And it's the second reading of rezoning request, 12-12. Nina McBride, Sandy Varney, and approval is recommended.
Mr. Chair, I want to remove that from the consent agenda.
I'm not sure.
I would, I would remove my motion.
You made the motion. Do you withdraw?
I withdraw.
Okay.
I need to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Yes, sure there is.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any substitute motions?
Excuse me.
Not. Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Gee, we can have fun around here when our Executive Counsel isn't here.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.